Morning, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for December 2nd. We'll begin, as is customary, with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Someone appears to be here from the public. Move on to the approval of our minutes. Number 17th workshop and the 18th regular meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
And a second motion?
We moved in second that we approved the minutes of those previous meetings. Any comment or question, deletion or addition? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so moved. Thank you. And then we'll move on to Treasurer Nillan's report.
Good morning. We had expenditures this week of... We had receipts this week of $30,975.75. That goes to a total cash of $2,349,074.60. We had expenditures of $1,137,701.16. Our tax claim is $18,666.51, and that leaves us a balance of $1,192,706.93.
Make a motion to approve any treasurer's report subject to all.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Treasurer Nillan's report as presented, subject to all. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so moved. Thank you. Morning.
Morning.
Do you wish yourselves to proceed?
Michelle Sealy, Department of Human Resources. To me and check human resources assistant. Under personnel transactions, resignations and terminations. Angela Stangler, AG Care Manager 2 from Area Agency on Aging. Resignation effective November 19th. Destiny Fennell, Customer Service Card from Domestic Uations. Removal rescind acceptance of employment effective November 29th. Chris Cantrell, Adult Probation Officer 1, probation services. Resignation effective December 10th. Caitlin Humphrey, Adult Probation Officer 1, resignation effective December 3rd. Chase Sarpiche, Adult Probation Officer 1, resignation effective December 17th. Don Ebersole, First Deputy Recorder of Bees Retirement, effective January 29th. Jennifer Gibson, Casual Call LPN, Renova Center. Removal for job abandonment, effective December 2nd.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignations and terminations as read.
And I'll second the motion with special recognition to Don Ebersole for like 21 years of service.
It's been moved in second that we approved those transactions. Any comment or question?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, okay, wow, my math was off this morning. Nineteen eighty-five she started, that's a long time.
Thirty-six years, yeah.
Any other corrections to the motion?
Yeah.
Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same signs, so moved.
Under changes to status, transfers, and promotions. Tasha Pumpel, Promotion for Clerk Type S A in the District Attorney's Office to Juvenile Service Provider in the District Attorney's Office at a rate of $1,154.95 effective December 13th. And Orielle Leiva, Change of Status from Casual Correctional Officer to Full-Time Correctional Officer at a rate of $15.91 per hour, effective December 12th.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the status changes and transfers and promotions.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved in second that we approved those transactions. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same signs, so moved.
Under other transactions, Vote of Security would like to hire Barbara Dangler as a Court Term Door Monitor at a rate of $10.64 per hour, effective December 6th. Children and Youth Services would like to hire Courtney Rank as a Case Clerk of One at a rate of $1,319.29 by weekly, and that's the 2022 rate. Department of Emergency Services would like to hire Justin Neis, an Operations Technician at a rate of $12.30 per hour, effective December 6th. Department of Emergency Services would like to hire Brian Ward as the Deputy Director of 911 at the rate of $1,755.65 by weekly, effective December 6th. And the Department of Emergency Services would like to hire the following three Full-Time Telecommunicators, all at the rate of $16.22 per hour, all effective January 3, 2022. And this is that is the 2022 rate. And that is Eric Wilson, Michael Noel, and Jason Lad. Renova Center would like to rehire Michelle McGraw as a Full-Time Recreational Program A at the rate of $13.72 per hour, effective December 13th. Treasurer's Office would like to hire Janet O'Boyle as an Accounting Clerk C at the rate of $850.48 by weekly, effective December 6th. And Voter Registration would like to hire Sean Drasher as Chief Clerk of Elections at Voter Registration at the rate of $2,136.28 by weekly, effective December 13th.
I'll make a motion to approve the hirings as presented.
And I'll second the motion if anybody needs to spell the motions that are here. I know you were going to ask it.
It's been moved in second that we approve those transactions. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same signs, so moved.
Moving on to Salary Board. Motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Austin Beechey, Salary Increase Full-Time Correctional... Excuse me, Full-Time Telecommunicator in Department of Emergency Services to the rate of $18.20 per hour, effective November 28th. Haylen Vale, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, One-Time Longevity Payment of $1,250, effective December 16th. Stephen Schaefer, Longevity Payment Full-Time Correctional Officer at prison, One-Time Payment of $500, effective December 16th. Juan Lopez, Incremental Increase Full-Time Correctional Officer at the jail up to the rate of $17.65 per hour, effective December 12th. Samuel Walter and Hannah Harlu, Both Incremental Increases, Both Full-Time Correctional Officers at the jail, Both moving to the rate of $17.52 per hour, both effective December 12th.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve those Salary Board transactions. Any comment or question regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same signs, so ordered.
In the mandated conference seminars, Sidney Parker Harrow from Probation Services would like to attend the Basic Training Academy in State College, December 13 through the 17th, with lodging, meals, and parking reimbursement, 40 credits mandated by PCCD. And Jermaine McQueen, Darren Earnfield, and Dwight Pepper from Probation Services would like to attend the Tacticalful Leadership Training in Middletown, March 7, 2022. $537 of registration fee with meals reimbursement, 8 credits mandated by JCC.
Make a motion to approve the conference and seminar requests as mandated.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve those mandated requests. Any comment or question regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same signs, so ordered.
Turned on mandated, I have Diana Henriques and Sherry Small from Clerk of Courts who'd like to attend the new User Penalty Case Processing in the County School. Begin December 1 through the 3rd, no other reimbursements.
Make a motion to approve attendance to non-mandated conferences as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve that Clerk of Courts request. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same signs, so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Can we get a little info on Mr. Drasher? Just where he comes from?
Right now, he's locked in the polls.
So he's... That's where he comes from?
He's not leaving. No, Jamie, do you want to get that?
He's from Palmara, and he comes to us having been Judge of Elections. I think recently, like, with Inspector Elections there in Palmara for the last two, four years. So he does have some experience, and he's familiar with staff, you know? And he's just ready to kind of change what he's doing to do this kind of...
He's a lot like Mark Michael, and I'm a good fit, I believe.
I think so.
Is the deputy position still open?
It is, so that's going to be to him to spell it. So it starts 13th, or to... Time Breakers is 15th, anybody's interested?
What did you say?
Time Breakers. So people that got maybe, you know, one or two or three write-in votes for a vacant position and could be seated, but sometimes you have more than one. So then we send out letters saying, first goal, do you want the job? And if they do, then they're still going to want it.
This is like the election that never ends?
I agree.
We're still not settled?
School boards are reorganizing, I guess, so those have to be established, so...
It's running a little early, Jamie, if you want to insert something.
It goes here if anyone. First, let me do a quick resolution from you. Resolution of Board of Commissioners designating the county planning department Senior Transportation Planner, Ms. John Fitzkey, has authorized signatory for execution of documents related to PND's Reimbursement Agreement System or the ECMS. It's noted it's the online grant acceptance.
Second the motion.
Is that a motion?
I didn't, I can't make a motion.
Oh, okay, I make a motion. Oh, shoot. Okay, it's one of those days. Yes, I make a motion to accept John and Fitzkey or a Senior Transportation Planner in this resolution to sign our rail trail resolutions and bills as they come in.
I'll second the motion.
We're approving a resolution, basically.
The resolution is...
As presented.
Yeah, so John can sign to accept funding for the...
I just wanted to make sure that's exactly what it has worded there.
Yeah, yeah.
You have a motion, second to approve that resolution. Questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same signs, so moved. Thank you.
Do the... Before I just take a minute, I'll take a minute to breathe. I have appointments to the Children and Youth Advisory Board, whose terms expire... Will expire December 31st, and there's need for approval to extend their terms to December 31st, 2024. Aaron King O'Millar of Bird Street, Richland. Marty Hess of Willow Street, Lebanon. Sue Warner of North Lancaster Street, Johnston.
I make a motion to approve those three appointments to the board.
And I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second that we appoint those folks and with our sincere appreciation for their service. Any comment or question? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same signs, so moved.
Also have a new appointment to that same board. And Aaron is sort of a bit of a biography. She's recommending Roberto Santiago. Would fill a term until December 2024 as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Roberto Santiago to the Children and Youth Board.
And I'll second that motion.
It's been moved in second that we approved the nomination of Roberto Santiago. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same signs, so moved.
And finishing those... Finishing appointments, the nominating committee of the MHIDEI Advisory Board is recommending the appointment for additional three-year term ending 12/31/2024 for John Johnson, River Allen Smith, and Bonnie Petrie.
Make a motion to approve those appointments.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve those reappointments and again, with our sincere thanks for their service. Any comment or question regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same signs, so moved.
Hello, you're all set. We'll go to Jay Wagner, our financial advisor from Sussman Hana Group. Jay's here today to talk about our recent foray into the market for bond issues, which I'll talk a little more about in the budget, but we'll talk about how we did.
Great, good morning.
Good morning.
Really good news. We're very pleased with the results of the underwriting that was done by RBC Capital Markets and Piper Jaffray as a joint underwriting team. And so, yeah, just a two-page summary. I tried to keep those to very simple points that you can always refer to. We priced the bonds on November 23rd, which is a little unique because we had a holiday in that week. And there are times where being in a holiday week is not good. This year, it actually was very good, and if they were, everybody else decided not to be. So we were the only show in town, which actually worked out pretty well. We are scheduled to close on December 16th, so between now and December 16th really is finalizing documents and waiting for DCD approval, which should be forthcoming in the next week or two. Again, this project provides for your new 911 building, the associated radio equipment, and also facility acquisition on this property. You're using some available funds, so we're only financing $42.5 million. And as you might recall, we started more in the low to mid-fifties. So it's $42.5 million financing, and I'll get to the details of the financing on the next page. But we have wrapped this around your existing debt because your current debt declines significantly three years out. And so you'll see very little principal amortization on this new series of bonds for the first two years, with the idea that it fits into your budget much, much better if we do it that way. It's a very modest deferral, so the expense in this interest rate environment is nominal. Your true interest cost, which accounts for the cost of the bonds themselves plus the cost of issuance, for 25-year debt is 2.415%. So you acquire with 25-year money at less than 2.5%, which is remarkable. Payment dates will be April 15 and October 15. It's yield interest payments every six months, principal annually. And you can see then, I'll flip to the next page. Oh, and I will say, we did receive the A-plus rating, which you were upgraded, I think, a year or two ago. And in this environment of COVID and stressed budgets, that's actually a very positive indication of how you manage the county's affairs. The rating call went very well, and so we're very pleased with that outcome. These bonds have what we call an eight-year optional redemption feature, so beginning October 15 of 2029, the first date at which you could pay these bonds off if you chose to do so. Next page, then, is a picture of your existing debt on the left side of the page. And again, you can see principal of about $2.746 million in fiscal year '22, and then $1,565.23, and then it drops off significantly. So the objective of this financing was to not overburden the near-term budget by creating core level debt. You can see in the next set of columns in the blue, $5,000 of principal being repaid in 2022 and 2023, and then it increases dramatically to more than $1 million of principal thereafter. You can see the coupon rates range from 1% to 3% across the spectrum of the yield curve, and so we are very, very pleased with that outcome. As you recall, we went through a process of soliciting proposals for underwriters. In our opinion, that process probably saved $150,000 versus what the market rate would have been for that service. And through the negotiation of interest rates, and Jamie participated on the phone calls, we were able to get very, very low interest rates and very effective yields with an eight-year call. So we are very pleased with the outcome of the underwriting. And then, just to show you on the far right side, you can see in the yellow the aggregate debt, and then I guess that's red, or pink, total debt service peaks in 2022 and then starts to drop off. So levels off at just under $2.8 million beginning in 2024 and runs through 2046. So again, 25-year debt, which in today's marketplace with low interest rates and the type of asset you're financing is very, very common. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Roy?
Doesn't require any action. All this was approved by the parameters ordinance that you adopted a couple months back. Again, that was all subject to final numbers that were produced on November 23rd.
Since our last one, that may be obvious to everyone else, but what would be a reason after eight years for, you know...
Lower interest rates.
Is that... Well, okay, so that's not...
That's not... Well, these interest rates, you know, they always say never say never. It will be a stretch to believe we refinanced. And having said that, very few bond issues get past the call date without being refinanced. The dynamics of getting to the call date reduces it from 25-year debt to what will be 17-year debt, 16-year debt, 17-year debt. And so shortening the yield curve has a very positive effect. And so it's possible that we refinance them, but that would be the reason.
That would be the reason.
Just lower interest rates. It takes about a 1% drop in rate. So keep in mind, you financed 25-year debt at 2.4%. Rates would have to drop to under 1.5% for refinancing to make sense. We've been stuck in this rate environment now for the better part of 11 years, so who knows how long this will persist.
Do you have a question? The building acquisition, that would be the city site. There's no amounts listed to each of those within the bond issue. Do you just have to name it, or do you have to assign a number to each of them?
So we do have numbers assigned to that. We didn't list it in this. Let's see if I can find it quickly for you.
It's two, two and a half.
Two and a half, yes.
Radios are...
Eight? Yeah, 7.8, actually, the rest is...
Oh, I...
Yeah, 7.8, sorry.
And then the building itself is 15 or 16?
No, it would be...
30, actually.
30.
Four and a half, yeah.
Oh, that's with the furnishings, I would say.
Yeah.
Okay. Time to... How do we get to that?
That's all of your project costs.
Okay.
Architects, engineering, permits, construction, definitely.
And we'll look for reimbursements wherever possible from the telephone tax and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, there would... Absolutely. Bob's nodding behind, so...
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Roy?
Jay, what is the credit rating? A+? There's an A++ that's... Is that the best?
So the best is AAA.
Oh, okay.
Not even the federal government's AAA anymore. Then it goes AA, and then it's single A. And within single A, there's a plus, which means you're very, very close to AA. There's a regular A, which would be the middle. And then there's an A- minus, which would be the low end of the A category. For a county the size of Lebanon, to get to AA, you would have to hoard cash. And so while it's great to say you're AA, you're almost going to taxpayers of this service if you're hoarding that much cash. And it's a lot of cash. The rating agencies, the three most... It's like real estate, location, location, location. Rating agencies, it's cash, cash, cash. That's all they really care about. So A+, in our opinion, is an outstanding reflection of fiscal responsibility and management.
Thank you.
And we got there from a triple B+?
Yes.
Seven years ago.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, you know, and again, in that timeframe, it's hard to... It's easy to get downgraded, it's really hard to get upgraded. So you've done a wonderful job since that kind of warning shot they fired at you several years ago. Much, much better picture today.
Jay, I just would... We've done a wonderful job. I appreciate your saying that, but I want to say that you helped us get there, and we certainly appreciate that.
Thank you. It's easy to make recommendations, it's hard to enact recommendations. So the credit goes to you. That's the hard part. Thank you.
He now has a grant. Oh, this grants for $42 million? Five, I hear.
All right, good morning. Good morning, commissioners. I am Bob Dodd, Director of Emergency Services for the county. And I'm here this morning asking commissioners to accept the US Homeland Security Grant for the South Central Task Force. And this is the grant that goes to pay all task force operations for the nine-county task force. The fiduciary agent is Dolph in County, but we all execute the grant so that they can see the money and pay our bills.
I'll make a motion to accept the Homeland Security Grant as presented by our director.
And I'll second the motion.
A motion, second to approve this grant request for a consortium. Any comment or question?
I probably should have said the dollar amount. It's $1,217,000.
Anything else? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same signs, so moved. Right, Robert?
Here you're getting a new building.
That's what the news says.
You're so inclined, we could have Lori just a couple minutes.
Sure.
And then you let... If you ever anybody... Promise me she'll be... I'm not rushing her along. She's here to follow up on Marcella Sherr's grant that you had awarded to Lebanon, and she's back to say...
Thank you, yeah. So I'm Lori Books from North Lebanon Township. First, we'd like to say thank you for the $25,000 grant that we received from you to make this project possible. Our project consisted of constructing a new open-air pavilion with a storage building attached for us at our newest Lenny and Albi Park, which is on Narrows Drive. And I'll schedule a real brief overview of all the work that went into this building that our staff did. So we started out by having our maintenance crew strip and strip the top soil and prepare the site. They had to make the level area and dig the footers. We then purchased the block from Stuart Masonry. We also hired them to lay the block. After the walls were up, our guys then backfilled the area and started to prepare the stone pad for the flooring. They had to form the pad, haul and grade the stone base, and finally add rebar and reinforcing wire mesh to create the concrete prior to the crime being poured for the flooring. We then hired Collins Trucking to haul in and pour the flooring. And then our staff, again, was responsible for finishing the concrete work, stripping the forms, and sealing the concrete. Once that was all done, we moved on to framing. We purchased the trusses for Midget Flyrafters, and our township crew did all the installation, which included the trusses, the roofing, and the framing for the rest of the building. That included placing the wall plates on the block walls, setting the pavilion posts and beams, and setting the roof trusses. They also did the roofing, which was white in the plywood, the roof, the papers, the shingles, the drip edging, and all that goes with that. As you can see in the photos, I don't know if you can see that far or not, but when we got the block wall, we had a really good rate if we left them use the leftover block that they had, so it was different colored, but it was worth it. And in the end, we ended up just painting it to match the color that we had chosen for the other things, which was, we painted the block walls to match the soffit and the fascia and the siding on the gables, which you can sort of see on the end, it's all green. And then we painted everything to match. And then they also, at the very end, installed the doors and the windows. And lastly, they did the final grading and planted grass seed. The construction was completed in October, which was just two months ago. And our total project cost was $55,477.47. That includes all of the materials, and it also includes the township labor and equipment as part of our 50% match for the grant. So I'd just like to close by saying thank you again for the opportunity to apply for the funds from the Marcella Sherr grant. The township really appreciates it, and our residents get great use out of it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks good.
I think so. Thank you.
Certainly did that, that's a many-dutch style, huh? Yeah. Like, over block, paint over it.
Hey, you guys take the breaks where you can, right?
That's a great way to do your match, though. I wish we could get more townships to recognize that.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're on set. We're into presentation of the 2022 Lebanon County Budget. And that includes some pie charts that break and, and some charts that break down various categories of funding, both expense and revenue, and percentage changes in all of those. And toward the back, the descriptions of the groups that fall into those certain categories. And I've added, um, on the back is also this time of our graph on the very back. It's over fifteen moments. The county budget for 2022 is being presented at a cost of 123 million, nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven twenty-seven, at a millage rate of 3.8925 mils. Since 2019, I talked about this two weeks ago, the county's been facing growing deficit, reaching this year, or in anticipation of next year, deficit would be 6.5 million dollars. And we've outlined this in years past, but it began with the contracting of Prime Care Medical at the jail back in 2019. And that was a $3 million cost to contract them, which was a substantial increase in the medical costs for the jail. That started us from a balanced budget that was achieved back in 2016 on a, on a path to some deficit, deficits, which we've been able to cover with some carry-forward cash in the past few years. But we reached a point inevitably where either we're going to need more revenue or cuts are going to be drastically made in order to balance a budget. So hence the recommendation for 2022 to go from 3.2925 mils to 3.8925 mils, which is obviously six tenths of a mil or an 18% increase in the county millage. What that would mean for taxpayers, and the best way I could demonstrate that would be the average assessment of a residential property in Lebanon County is 168,950 dollars. Under the current millage of 3.2925, that tax would be 556 dollars, 27 cents. With a millage of 3.8925, that tax would become 657 dollars, 64 cents, or an increase of 101 dollars on the average residential property. General fund expenses increasing by 6.63% to 54 million, 17,704. I do want to add, and I'll talk about this a little bit later, but the budget at 123 million is a, is a steep increase over last year's 86 million dollars. That, however, is almost entirely a one-time anomaly year because of the construction of the DES building, 911 Center. That being capital that's included in this budget, but of course, once the construction is complete and those funds are spent and have passed through the budget, then we would go back to what I would consider a more normal number or, or a, you know, number with not, not that spice of capital, without that spice of capital. Aside from the proposed increase in millage generating additional tax revenue and the sale of a county-owned land parcel, which we have been working at for a couple of years now, the intersection of 422 and, or Cumberland and Walnut Street at East End, that is in next year's budget as revenue. But other than that, sources of revenue are seeing very little growth and even some reductions for 2022. Cash on hand that we have been using for carry-forward has diminished over the years in order to bridge those deficits I've spoke of. And so in order to reach a balanced budget this year, we are going to add 372,000 in cash. The, the millage does not make it all the way to balance, but I'll explain that in a Significant cost increases continue to occur in, in mostly the areas of public safety, such as the jail, DES, 911, placement of youth in the children and youth, delinquent youth in the children and youth department. And again, I mentioned the, the contract with Prime Care Medical continues to be a cost that we just at some point have to make up and cover. It has undoubtedly provide better, a better level of care at the jail, but certainly comes at a cost. DES continues to incur costs for dispatching and personnel, as you'll hear radios and upgrades and so on, that, that are part of that operation. So those, I mean, if I had to categorize where the expenses are coming from, it is in large part public safety type expenses, including jail, 911, D-1 placement, just to recap those. Employee expenses, like many employers, the county's facing labor shortage across most departments, including the 24/7 services at the jail, 911, and the Renova Center. Retrude and retention of employees is at an all-time low right now. Commissioners are taking some measures to attempt to stem that problem. We've initiated, as those who have been, were here two weeks ago, a, a sign-on incentive at the jail for correctional officers. That's being considered in other places, and also some increases in starting wages that is, that are in the works. Some of those costs are eligible through American Recovery Plan or Rescue, I'm sorry, American Rescue Plan funds. And we'll utilize those when we can for that type of expense. There was a study conducted in 2021 of county salaries to those of, to those counties of similar size and proximity, and we will in 2022 and 2023 be making some adjustments to our, to our grade and, and step scale in order to be competitive. We are having a very difficult time hiring. We are in some cases not getting applicants, and some of the positions in departments are, are, are thin and are strung out, and it's something that needs to be addressed. Employee salary increases for 2022 are as follows: non-union, 3% increase; court-related non-professionals; and court-appointed professionals, both represented by Teamsters, 3.5%; social services, also by Teamsters, 3%; county detectives, 3%; jail correction officers and corporals are represented by ASME, and we are currently negotiating for the next, the next agreement. And Department of Emergency Services dispatchers are represented by chocolate workers and are receiving 4% and 2% depending on their longevity. The pension plan will again be funded fully, which is basically an expectation at this point. It's been seven or eight years that the county's been doing that, meeting the actuarially determined contribution, and for 2022, that is 3.1 million. And that has resulted, that along with some strong returns on investments have resulted in the pension fund being funded at a level of 83%. Health insurance premiums for the county are a pretty big hit this year. They're going up by 9.2%. That alone is a 1.1 million dollar increase in employee, employment costs that the county is bearing. Like many employers, med, the utilization of medical services by employer, by employees has rebounded from 2020. There was a period of time during COVID shutdown that people were not using medical care or didn't have access in some cases when facilities were not doing elective procedures, and people were just staying away from that. And later on in 2020, that rebounded, and in 2021, and, and the most recent experience is where our premiums are based, and so therefore, that's what the rates are in effect, it is a rebound. And in addition to inflation, healthcare costs, which are going to be seen. Capital projects referred to earlier, the 123 million, 123.9 million dollar budget has a significant portion of it being capital projects, the largest of which is the construction of a new facility for the Department of Emergency Services, including a 911 center, administrative offices, training space, and an operations building to house the county's hazmat team. Also, some additional storage for supplies. The entire project is, is expected to cost 40.9 million dollars. Bids for that building have been awarded, and it will, and we will also be doing a new radio dispatch system, which will be implemented over the next two years. That has a total cost of 19.8 million dollars. So all total, these projects are 60.7 million dollars. However, we are intending to use 18.4 million of the county's portion of the American Rescue Plan Act in different categories of eligibility for this project, which brings the net cost down to 42.3 million dollars. The rest, as you heard, the rest of the funds, this 42 million, are being raised through a general obligation fund. We were able to categorize different aspects of this project, such as portions of the HVAC system. I want to credit Bob Dowd and Ned Pelger and Joe Connor from our design team. Certain portions of the HVAC, HVAC system, which you're going to have a higher level of filtration, for example. Areas of training, in some cases, are a little larger in order to accommodate distancing if needed. We're going to be facing this any time again in the future. And we have additional storage built into the hazmat operations building, which we found early in 2020, didn't really have anywhere to go with PPE when we got it. It was literally just stuffed in the corners and skids and things everywhere. Still is. So those are examples of areas that, under the current regulations of ARPA, we're able to attribute to that need and reimburse for the cost of that type of construction and those types of, those types of needs. In addition, part of that bond is also, as was mentioned earlier, the county has agreed to purchase the City of Lebanon's portion of this building at a cost of 2.25 million, which is expected to settle sometime in 2022. And there is some money built in there for renovation of that side for county offices to move into the city's space. Which leads us to the debt service. As Jay Wenger mentioned earlier, the county's debt service for 2022 will increase by 1.4 million or 38.6%. That is, clearly that is part of the additional expense in the general fund this year that is leading to the, to the larger deficit. However, and this is where, I'll go back to the part where we're adding some cash this year to balance the budget, but anticipating that debt service going down. Again, Jay, Jay mentioned that earlier. So the debt service in 2023 will be reduced by 1,021,000 as we retire some of our existing long-term debt in 2023, and then we'll go even lower than that by 2024 and stabilize, I think he said, at 2.8 million dollars for 2024. So that is how we're able to sort of pluck through with, with not quite, you know, not a larger tax increase, I guess, for, for 2023. The, the chart on the back of that packet, I just want to point out, shows where we were in 2015 with the deficit. If you recall, there was a millage increase then for 2016, which kept us balanced for three straight years. And in 2019, when the contract with Prime Care was, was completed, we began to slip into deficit and since then it has grown. And again, revenue needs to be added or cuts need to be made. And so with that, I'll, I'll entertain questions, but it's my recommendation that we go to 3.8925 mils in order to bring this balance, the budget back.
Do we get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. This is a plenary adoption of the budget.
Yes, this is, so, so today's action would be to put this budget on display at an established millage for the public in the next 20 days at least, and then come back, and the plan is to come back on December 23rd and consider final adoption.
So I'll make a motion to put the budget on display with the, all the information that has been presented.
And I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Any questions?
I just, yeah. This time I wasn't. A couple of things, Jamie, how does the negotiation with ASME for the jail COs and corporals, how, how would that potentially impact the budget?
It, it could, it could impact it depending on an agreement or an arbitration. But what I have done in anticipation is, I have some sense of where we are currently, you know, and it's hopefully going to wind up by the end of the year. So I know where the negotiations are, so we've budgeted at least that. So it potentially could go up slightly, but it shouldn't be a, a large dollar amount if it goes up anymore from where we, from where we sit with them right now.
And then also, you said, you know, obviously it's understandable, the budget at 123 million is a steep increase. So this is like an outlier year?
Yes.
Okay, so then in the budget for 2023 is going to come back down to more normal numbers?
Yeah, 90 million, maybe somewhere in that.
What does that do to the millage? Would that, so the millage will?
Yeah, the millage is, is exclusively for the general fund.
Okay.
So these capital projects, you know, go up and down, but that doesn't impact millage unless we're raising millage to fund.
Okay.
So that won't change the.
Okay.
In other words, the debt service is what really don't change the millage, but the cost of the building itself, which is included in the budget, but.
The debt service is in there, but only has one year's payment on it.
But even when the debt service goes down?
Well, then, yes, I, I think I understand now. So, so right now, we're putting 372,000 in to balance. And if you're saying, then what happens when the millage drops in '23 and '24? Theoretically.
The debt service.
Yes, yeah, sorry, the debt service, thank you. Drops in '23 and '24, we theoretically go into a surplus, physicians. But inevitably, everything else is still going to go up. We'll still have health insurance increases, we'll still have increases in costs of jail itself and everything. So it's, you know, it's, it, it's going to go down, but, but the rest of the county budget's probably going to bring it back somewhat, but I still, I still intend it will be budgeted for, for balance for 2023 in my anticipation.
What, what was the percentage increase in '16 when?
Thirty.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, I know that.
He has the nail pieces everywhere.
So by comparison, this is like a bargain?
Exactly.
There's no joy in mudville.
No, but.
Yeah.
But it's understandable what we've discussed.
Thank you.
Would you like to see?
Any other comments? I mean, this has been focused on heavily, the responsibility of county government to provide safety for our citizens, and investment of this type is the way we have to do it. Anyone calls an ambulance or police or fire, they want the best response that is available, and that's what this is intended to provide. So for all our citizens, this is a good investment for the future, and at this point, it's unavoidable, so we are where we are. And I'll call the question.
Well, may I just comment?
No, sure.
Just briefly. I, I, I thought I summed up my thoughts yesterday at the department head meeting, but I think this is a, a balance. We're, we're balancing, as Commissioner Phillips said, meeting the public safety demands, taking care of and appreciating our employees, and just providing the public safety services to 140,000 people. This is a real bargain. No one, and especially me, takes any pride or pleasure in raising taxes on folks that work hard to provide a, a home for their family and, and have to pay the taxes on their property. But I, I think the, the budget well explains it, and people have known that we had to make this change with the, with the emergency services. So I, I, I feel very comfortable in voting for this and doing the best job that we can as responsible county commissioners for the county. responsible county commissioners for the county.
Well, I'd like to address the increase in the medical insurance and use this opportunity to ask everyone to please get a vaccine. It's so important. When people end up in the hospital, it costs a lot of money. Our nurses and doctors are really tired, and we need to do our part and get the vaccine, which will also help us to keep our medical insurance premiums in line. A million dollars more is a lot of money for medical insurance. And our hearts go out to the families that have lost loved ones. And please, let's all learn from this and keep our budget in check and keep people alive.
Is the health insurance self-funded?
No. We have certain caps built in. We have reinsurance that caps our losses at $85,000, for example. We can bring up for that kind of, you know, loss count, but now it's through cross, across the premiums.
The county jail is always traditionally, you know, the most, except for this year, is always typically the most expensive line item in the general fund.
Yes, still is.
Still is, always will be, because there's no reimbursement for the jail.
And even, I mean, you know, I go to the prison board meetings, and they, they talk about the, the population is the lowest that it's been since like the early 1990s or the 1980s or something. That doesn't, is it, is it like the physical plant that just, it just is what it is?
Yeah, but you're still dealing with the same size building, the same staff size. And, you know, there's a point, and I don't know sitting here what that point is, there's a point at which when the population goes down, you would theoretically need less staff, and that's the most expensive portion of such.
But we have less staff now.
Except that we, exactly, we have less staff right now. We have staff over time, which is huge in order to cover, cover the facility and maintain ratios of COs to inmates. So, you know, if we were at, say, a full complement of officers, it could be time to ask the question, you know, when you go from 400 to 75, well, at what point do you start to reduce? And there's, you know, the meal budget goes down, you know, some of the consumables go down, but not by, not by a lot. Our meals are fairly inexpensive, so really, it's the staffing. But again, we don't have a lot of staff right now, so we are ending up paying the overtime, and there's no savings in that.
And then what would be the next most costliest? Is that, is that the juvenile placements?
Yeah, it would be county support to agencies, and that is, yeah, juvenile placements is, I can get you a number, but yeah, that's, that's a couple million dollars.
Children and youth is $11,400,000.
That's their overall agency budget. The county's portion is significant. I mentioned here, by the way, the domestic relations office, I didn't mention that in my summary, but it's worth it. They've been very cooperative to help in this budget, and there's some incentive money that has been setting in an account for uses for the operation, but, and it's been earned by meeting certain marks over the years, and then the state reimburses it. They have incentives for that, for meeting certain percentages, and we've received that on occasion, but we've not used the funding because for every dollar we spend in domestic relations, we get 66 cents back, I'm sorry, 30 cents back, not, it's a two-third, one-third, one-third for us. And when you spend the incentive money, however, there is no reimbursement because it was essentially in full money. We are using 500,000 of that this year to offset the cost of the domestic relations departments, and that has helped us to get, to get through here. But yeah, county support to other agencies, mental health, children and youth, DES was county support. Aging. It's in. We don't have, I don't think we have the county support to lead in here.
Can you speak a little bit to the staffing, part-time and overtime, like in Norton? And we talked about this in the last meeting. The total number of employees and how many are actually down across the county?
In, in round numbers, we have about 700 positions. We're down, I think, a little over 100 right now.
That's, that's full-time part-time?
Yeah.
Is the jail correctional officers the biggest number that you're missing?
I think as a percentage, as a percentage, they are, they have the most vacancy, as a percentage, you know. Most departments have vacancies and are having a difficult time getting, getting applications and filling positions right now. But they, I think jail has the highest percentage, as do other jails. Lancaster County is facing the same issue, and I'm sure others are, that's a lot familiar. They, they did a, they did a hiring incentive first, as far as I know, but I don't know if you cover any of Lancaster news, but they acknowledged a few weeks ago that it hasn't really improved things too much. It's just, there's something else going on out there, people just not applying to jobs. So everyone's trying to, you know, take from others, the workforce that exists.
Another piece that we didn't mention, but it does have a bearing on this, is that inflation is a 30-year high in terms of pressures on the costs and so on. And I know when Laura said something about the bargain compared to the last, I obviously wish that this would be a smaller number, but it does break down to about $840 a month additional money for that household, $168,000, the assessed value of that house. So that's the, the new money that the family budgets are going to have to come up with. So, but that's, when you're across the county, that gets us there, and we feel that's the minimum we can work with. On favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so move.
All right, we'll be back with that on December 23rd. Are there any changes that arise till then, certainly along the way? There are, there are very minor adjustments. For example, the correctional officers area settles that, that change. We've covered everything else. Before we completely leave the room, our bond council has some documents for you. Does Justice Commissioner Phillips decide?
Yes.
And again, the action was taken in the parameters ordinance already, but just finished up the paperwork.
To closing, would like to thank my colleagues and Jamie, you and the department heads and our employees for pulling together on this budget and getting us through this difficult pass.
I'd just like to say, I'd like to thank specifically Commissioner Litz for supporting this. I genuinely appreciate it. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.